I didn't fake them.
I'm gonna sleep in my office today.
Did you go on your bike ride?
Yeah.
Did you? And your hair still looks good.
Eight miles.
Did you? You're on Euro.
Didn't even break a sweat.
Thank you, lady. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill. Bill. Do you have any questions and let me know. If you have any questions about what I gave you.
Okay, okay.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
I've had a week of my life. I've had a week.
Hey, you got five points. Maybe you might have to like, I don't think you're buying here. Are you buying?
What about you?
Hey.
Yeah.
That's what they want to say in my chair. I feel like the sit sir. You're sitting here because you are the boss.
He's sitting on top of your.
Was it, was it that nice?
Uh, you can add to the April first. One twenty one. Okay.
See, that's why he's sitting there. Oh, April twenty first, April first, twenty twenty one meeting. I'd like Mr. Heckman to lead us in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Zimbo, please call the roll.
Mr. Cusick.
Physically present.
Mrs. Ferraro. Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Here.
All present except Mrs. Ferraro.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of March eighteenth? Mr. Myers, can I have a second? Just a second. Call for a voice acclamation vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address counsel? Seeing none. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
I do, ma'am. Good evening, counsel. As you know, we have been very aggressive throughout the pendency of the pandemic in attempting to crush the pandemic. And right now, we have a great deal of infections spreading in Northampton County. And, you know, one of the reasons for that is that we have a the Department of Health has a way of, a metric of measuring it per one hundred thousand people. And we have about three hundred thousand people. And we also are very fortunate and blessed to have a significant number of institutions of higher education. And students of those institutions of higher education make up about thirteen percent of the new infections that we're seeing raging out of control here. While convenient to blame all of the surge and the big numbers you're reading about and watching on TV in Northampton County specifically, it's tempting to lay that all on the college students. It's not all them, they're about thirteen percent. The largest cohort of new infections is coming from people ages thirty to forty five. So what I would say about that is, you know, folks, we have to keep wearing our masks. And as community leaders, we all need to keep encouraging people to wear their masks. We need to encourage people to continue with good hand hygiene, washing your hands. And we need to encourage, we just, we need to continue to talk about social distancing. It's important, I know we're all tired. We're all tired of wearing these masks. We're all tired of keeping distant. We're all tired of these things. But we, we have to continue to enforce them. But that's not enough. And as you know, throughout the pandemic, we've been testing. We tested with Easton Hospital in our collaboration, COVID nineteen testing. And we've been testing with Coordinated Health, a division of LVHN, out at Emmerich Boulevard. And heretofore, you've needed a COVID nineteen symptom to be tested. The problem with that is, if you don't catch the asymptomatic folks, they're out there in the community spreading the virus. So we have reached an agreement with LVHN, Coordinated Health, to test asymptomatic people at our test site. The importance of that is, as you catch those asymptomatic positives, those folks will stay home and they won't infect other people. We have to get on top of this, when we have to get on top of it now. And Northampton County, throughout the pendency of this process, has never shied from doing the hard and tough things. And we will continue to do that. So we have some really good news tonight. We have been informed by Senator Bob Scola that we will be receiving the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one Governor's Award for Local Government Excellence for Health and Wellness Initiatives for our C-Med program, the Rental and Utility Assistance Program. I want to specifically thank Tina Smith, Director of the Department of Community and Economic Development, Frank Brooks of the Department of Community and Economic Development, Sue Wondolowski, our Director of Human Services, Steve Barron, our Director of Fiscal Affairs, for crafting this program. And when, when I accept the award for excellence on behalf of Northampton County, I will be sure to let everyone know that they were the, the driving force here in Northampton County behind this good program, which is working well, by the way. The next item I have for you, earlier tonight, you heard about one of your agenda items, the sign-on bonus at Gracestale for LPNs, CNAs, and dietary staff. This is just another example of how aggressive we've been in trying to staff Gracestale. And I will tell you, throughout the pendency of the pandemic, despite some popular thinking to the contrary, our PPD has been well above the state minimum average. And usually, even throughout twenty twenty, when we were suffering thousands and thousands of call-offs, we very rarely fell below three PPD, three hours PPD. So this kind of initiative is going to help us. And I wanna, I wanna thank AFSMI at Gracestale specifically because they've done three things with us recently that historically have been hard to get done. One, the sign-on bonus. And to your question about retention, to their credit, they didn't ask us for anything. Historically, a hang-up on the sign-up bonus would be, well, what about for the existing folks? They've also agreed with us to let us do the twelve-hour weekend shifts. When we're short at Gracestale, it's generally over the weekend. So when you're allowing people to work those four twelve-hour shifts, you're going to see the PPD rise over the weekends. So that, that was a major, a major change that they worked with us to accomplish. That the number one issue getting that done through the years was also a collective bargaining issue. And finally, they've worked with us on extending health insurance to part-timers. This is a big barrier to hiring part-time folks. So now, part-time folks, new hires at Gracestale, will be getting health insurance. So as you can see, there is very little that we haven't done to try and get folks in the door, to try and keep folks there. And we seem to be turning a corner now on that, as you heard earlier from the Gracestale folks. What was it? Approximately twenty seven point six million dollars? I want to share with you a letter Mr. Barron received today. Dear Mr. Barron, the Compliance Monitoring Division of the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCD, Financial Management Center, has reviewed your administration of the funding provided through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security CARES Act, County Relief Block Grant, CRBG. Our monitoring is required by two CFR two hundred, section two hundred point three three one, and supports DCD's mission of ensuring that there is transparency and accountability in the use of public funds. Hope, I hope we were transparent and accountable. Let's see what they concluded. Based on our review of the financial status reports, FSR, and general ledger supporting the CRBG grant, we conclude the following. Administrative expenditures charged to the grant were supported and reasonable. Expenditures incurred within the CRBG grant appear to have been supported, reasonable, and a necessary part of the county's response to the COVID nineteen virus and within the parameter set by the Commonwealth's Legislation House Bill. This concludes our monitoring of the funding given to Northampton County as part of the CARES Act, CRBG. We're very pleased about that. And I, I have to say, counsel, you did a great job jumping in to help folks all over Northampton County, especially with your small business grant program. Nearly eight hundred businesses, nearly eleven million dollars, throwing that lifeline to help small businesses survive and thrive. You know, the accounting for this matter fell upon Fiscal Affairs and Mr. Barron, and they just did a tremendous job, not with tremendous support from Ms. Smith and DCD. So I'm very pleased, not only with what you did, what we did, but what they did in terms of compliance, because transparency with this, with public funds is so important. And accountability with public funds is so important, and we know we were accountable. On your agenda tonight, counsel, and then I'm done, you have two, what I think are very important issues. You will be determining whether we approve and distribute the Emergency Medical Services grant funding. Now, I think, and, and I hope you'll indulge me, but it's important for the people of Northampton County to know what we're doing here. We are assisting their local Emergency Medical Services and Volunteer Fire Companies. And we're doing it throughout Northampton County. Bethlehem Township Volunteer Fire Company, Bushkill Township Volunteer Fire Company, Dewey Fire Company, ambulance number one, East Allen Township Volunteer Fire Company, Eastern Emergency Squad, Hecktown Volunteer Fire Company, Lookout Company, number one, Northampton Regional Emergency Medical Services, Inc., Plainfield Township Volunteer Fire Company, Steel City Volunteer Fire Company, Suburban Emergency Medical Services, Vigilance Hose Company, number one, Washington Township Volunteer Fire Company, Wind Gap Ambulance Corps. The people who serve the people who are in distress. And you have before you a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fifty nine dollars and thirty six cents in grant money tonight. And I would urge you to get this out to them as soon as possible because we know these agencies are hurting. Thank you. And you have Grow Norco as well in front of you tonight. And there are very many worthy projects contained within the Grow Norco process as well, which you're funding nonprofits throughout Northampton County and helping them during this very difficult time for them. And with that, I urge you to approve that as well. With that, that includes my report.
Thank you.
Includes my form.
Is there gonna be any more, is there gonna be any more future money maybe going to these ambulants corps and people like that?
Yes, absolutely. I think, I think it's a program we'll, we will propose to you every year.
I have a question about the COVID testing. You said that we're gonna start testing asymptomatic.
Yes.
People.
Yes.
How are asymptomatic people identified?
Well.
Through contact tracing?
We have to identify yours, well, that's one way. Or you, you know, you were at work and some folks tested positive there. Maybe, I, I don't have any, I don't have a fever, I'm not coughing, but maybe I should go tested and get tested anyway. You have classmates, they got sick, you're not sick, but maybe you should go get tested anyway. So, you know, workplace exposures, school exposures, at home, you know, the kid comes home and is, is not feeling well, maybe you ought to get tested too. That sort of thing.
So recently, my son came home from school because he was sitting next to somebody on the bus who got COVID. So the school called, they sent him home, and they told me not to get him tested until he showed symptoms and that I should wait ten days. So is there a new protocol that's going to go out for this? Because I, after a year, I think there is still some like, some missing pieces that people are trying to put together. Because I did go to the COVID testing site three days after. He did not, he was asymptomatic. And they said that he shouldn't get tested until the ten days. And furthermore, they said that even though I was sitting in the car with him, that I shouldn't get tested at all and that I didn't even have to quarantine, even though I'm sitting next to him, who is sitting next to her. So I'm wondering how this messaging is going to get disseminated to schools, to businesses, throughout the county?
We're working on it. And part of getting that message out, as folks are watching on YouTube, you don't need a symptom to come to thirty one hundred Emmerich Boulevard to get tested for COVID nineteen. Check our website for the hours of testing that take place there. And we just need to keep talking about it. We're communicating through the media. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the word out that way.
Yeah, I think we need to send something to every single.
I had the thought today that we should probably write to the school districts.
Yes.
And, and the colleges as well.
Every single school principal.
Yep.
Should be informed in some way about this protocol so that when they call parents and they send parents home, parents are empowered to help their children.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Quickest way to do that is to contact each superintendent and that will get rectified the problem.
Yep, that's the plan.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. McClure.
Thank you.
Do we have any other old business to be brought up at this time? Seeing none, let's move into new business. Tonight, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Twenty Twenty One Northampton County Budget Community Development Grants. I need someone to sponsor the ordinance. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
I'll second.
Zarinsky? Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held on April fifteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. Next, we have the consideration of a memorandum of understanding between AFSMI District Council eighty-eight, Local fourteen thirty-five, and the County of Northampton. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this resolution?
Thank you. Whereas on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, County Council received a memorandum of understanding between Northampton County and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. AFSMI, District Council eighty-eight, Local fourteen thirty-five Union regarding a sign-on bonus for nursing employees at Gracestale. Now therefore, it hereby resolved, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the memorandum of understanding shall be approved this first day of April two thousand twenty-one. So moved.
Thank you. This was addressed at our Human Services meeting prior, but do we have any further discussion on this matter? Mr. Cusick?
Thank you. Yeah, real quick, I, I think this is a good idea to offer a signing bonus, and we, we see nursing homes all over the area are doing this. But I mean, my concern is that the amount that we're offering is too low. Five hundred dollars, particularly for, for LPN, which is a very in-demand. I, it, to me, I'm, I'm looking, people can get an extra three hundred dollars a week to stay unemployed. An, an extra five hundred dollars after six months doesn't, I don't think it's enough. I, I know it's a start, but I think it should be more.
Mr. Heckman?
I'm just, what would you, I mean, you, if you think it should be more, what's, what are your thoughts?
I think we should break it down. I think LPN, maybe an extra two thousand, CNAs, maybe a thousand. You know, for the dietary, I think that, you know, those don't, I don't believe they require an immediate job certification. Am I correct with that? So maybe five hundred for, for those, but particularly the CNA and, and LPN, it, it should be higher.
I mean, I'll, I'm gonna support this as it is, but I, I, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to further discussions with the administration going forward. If, if they look at this and they feel that, you know, we'd like to, to look at possibly, see how well this works, and if it, if they think that we can do more, then, then I'd be willing to, to look at that as well. But I'll, I'll support this right now.
And just a reminder that this, as it was discussed, is only for a trial period of three months. And so like, it will either be terminated or it could be reviewed at that time.
So may I, can I ask you then? So in other words, at that time, we can discuss what the administration could look at and see how successful it was and, and if there needs maybe to be a change or something. So in other words, I didn't know that. So this is three months, and we'll get a recommendation lead at that point. Am I, would I be correct?
May I, may I be recognized? I would suggest that I would be amenable to Mr. Cusick's suggestions. Tonight, I just don't know budgetarily whether Brian had thought about what two thousand and one thousand would look like. So I think I would even be, you know, I, I would even be open to amending it before the three months. But let's, let's try at the three months, see what happens with the five hundred. And if it doesn't work, we can come back. And if it works budgetarily, we can increase it, which I certainly would be in favor.
Is this not the product of negotiations between the administration and AFSMI?
That's the other thing, we would, yeah, we would, we would have to open the MOU back up and, you know, but I, I, you know, I can't, I can't prejudge what they would do with that.
Right, so just because we vote on this today, let's say, put this through, this is what has been agreed upon.
Correct.
By the union and the administration. And I imagine this took a lot of deliberation.
It, there, there was some work involved.
Like a considerable amount of deliberation happened to make this so in front of us. And after three months, if you go back, I'm sure if you wanted to change it to a thousand dollars, that would be another couple of weeks of deliberation.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the question is, how successful is this?
Yes, so, yeah, I feel very comfortable supporting this. I understand that this is the product of the negotiations and the, this is what the union is comfortable for. This is going to union members or presumably to new union members that would.
Right, new, well, yes, correct.
And this is what the union is comfortable with, and, and I would back them.
Any further discussion, question that you wanna make?
Well, ju- just to, to follow up, if we were to vote no, we could send it back and they could negotiate a higher number and bring it back to us. And I would find it hard to believe that the union would say, no, don't give us more money.
I'm gonna defer to my union call.
It's not necessarily true.
Mr. McGee is recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I was actually thinking the same thing that, that Mr. Cusick was, as far as, it would, it would speed up the process, but, you know, I did think about what Mr. Heckman said. You know, they just rolled it out, it's something new, it's their idea, which is really cool, another proactive idea coming from the, you know, the folks over there. Imagine it was the staff's idea, the staff's idea at Gracestale.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, yeah, that's, that's, that's an interesting point. That would do it a little bit sooner. Or, or maybe, you know, instead of three months, at least in two months, we could start talking about it and start developing those, the negotiations or those, you know, that way gives a little bit of seed time to, so, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I think it's another great initiative to, you know, to get people hired on over there. I like what Mr. Cusick said, the fact that I don't wanna put this off any longer. It's a very short window, it's three months, let's give it a shot. Maybe five hundred actually works, who knows, you know? But in three months, we can modify this. So I'm certainly gonna support this resolution. And in three months, if we found out it didn't hit the top end employees, we can take another swing at it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee. Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
No.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of support of Wildlands Conservancy Grant for East Allen Township's Bicentennial Park Resolution. Mr. Cusick, will you introduce this, please?
Okay, whereas, East Allen Township plans to submit a grant application to undertake the stream and habitat restoration at East Allen Township's Bicentennial Park project. And whereas this project will help with stormwater concerns, help capture sediment and control the flow of stormwater runoff through the use of sediment four bays, riparian buffer plantings, marsh and wetland areas, and a meadow habitat, along with a walking path and an amphitheater to conduct education and conservation programs. Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County supports the application of East Allen Township to receive grant money from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to help preserve and protect the restoration of stream and habitat at Bicentennial Park. So we were contacted by Wildlands Conservancy, who is doing the, is consulting with them for the grant. And they had asked if we would support their application to DCNR, okay? Not for an application to our program. They'll be doing that separately. So this would just be in addition to their application that would go to DCNR. It is time-sensitive, and I would like to thank Ms. Zarinsky for her input in crafting this resolution.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that thank you from Mr. Cusick. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to thank the both of them. I'd like to thank the both of them.
Go ahead, thank you.
I wanna thank both of you.
I just think it's a great idea because of the educational end of it, I love it.
Can I call for the vote, please?
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Fargo Hefner. Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of Northampton County fiscal year twenty twenty-one Emergency Medical Services Grant Funding Resolution. Mr. Lot, will you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you. Whereas on March fifth, twenty twenty, Northampton County Council adopted Resolution Number twenty-seven, twenty twenty, creating Northampton County Emergency Medical Service Grant Program. And whereas, Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development solicited competitive applications for the twenty twenty-one Emergency Medical Service Grants. And whereas, a grant review committee comprised of NCDCED staff convened to review and make funding recommendations. And whereas, the recommendations attached hereto and made part of, hear of, as Exhibit A has been presented to Northampton County Council's Community and Economic Development Committee totaling one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars in grant funds for fourteen projects. And whereas, the approved projects will be funded using the Northampton County Local Share Table Games revenue. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the County of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved. Two, the county exec of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applications not to exceed the approved amounts for each grant. So introduced.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? We should have this introduced at the economic development meeting earlier this evening.
Question, very minor, but still a question. Bethlehem Township Volunteer Fire Company, we have two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and forty-six fifteen requested, two thousand, two hundred and forty-seven given. I assume that. I assume that, that's not an error. That's exactly what you, you decided to round them up. Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to be clear, I was voting. I, like, I know it's a few cents, but that's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you. Please stop looking at me.
Any questions or comments or any? Call for the vote.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Consideration next of fiscal year 2021 Grow Norco Round One Grant Projects for Funding Resolution. Mr. Lot, it's you again.
Sure, thank you. Whereas, Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development solicited competitive applications for the 2021 Grow Norco Round One Grants. Whereas, a grant review committee comprised of NCDCED staff convened to review and make funding recommendations. And whereas, the NCDCED has presented the grant review committee recommendations totaling 183,713 dollars in grant funds for 16 projects to the Economic Development Subcommittee of Northampton County Council. And whereas, Grow Norco Round One Projects will be funded using the Northampton County Local Share Table Game revenues. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the County of Northampton, one, the recommended grants in Exhibit A are to, are approved. Two, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the application, applicants not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. So introduced.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Kusick?
Yeah, I just had a comment and a question. First of all, typically, we, we've tried to avoid funding salaries and it looks like we're continuing to do more and more of that with these grants. And, and that's fine, as long as the applicants know that there's no guarantee that they'll get it in the future. But my question had to do with specifically the amount of table games money, seeing as how the sands was closed or had reduced hours and distancing. And I see Mr. Barron is here and I would wonder if he could maybe enlighten us as to how much money we lost or what the situation is there? Because revenue has to be down over the past year and have we adjusted for it?
So revenue is down in a lot of these programs because people obviously aren't going into the casinos and they've had the social distance. However, with the rise of online gambling, you don't have to leave your home to gamble. So that is, that is kind of, I can get you a report on that. The other thing is the demand for a lot of this money is a little bit down because some of it is tourist related and people just aren't going out anywhere right now because of the pandemic. So there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of give and take, but I'll get the comparative numbers for you and I'll have it, I'll get your report so you can see based on the quarters. We haven't gotten the first quarter report yet for this year and I'm not, I didn't see the final numbers for 2020.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
And Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of equal rights constitutional amendment resolution. This is a new resolution. It is not the one that was due because the language was changed. Mr. Myers, will you please introduce the resolution?
Whereas, a ballot question is pending for the Pennsylvania Constitution to be amended by adding new section providing the equality of rights under the law shall now be denied or abridged because of individual's race or ethnicity. Whereas, Joint Resolution Number 2021-1, if approved by the electorate, will add new section to Article One of the Pennsylvania Constitution. Whereas, this amendment creates a constitutional prohibition against restricting or denying individuals' equal rights under Pennsylvania law because of race or ethnicity. Whereas, inclusion of this amendment within the Pennsylvania Constitution signifies that freedom from discrimination based on race and ethnicity is the essential principle of liberty and freedom, free government. Whereas, this amendment applies to all Pennsylvania states, counties, local governments and entities, guarantees equal, equality under the rights of law. Whereas, the amendment, if enacted, shall become a part of the Pennsylvania Constitution. As such, it, its provision shall be applied consistently with other provisions under Pennsylvania State Constitution. And whereas, this equal right to be free from racial, ethnic, or other discrimination will exist independent from any such rights under United States Constitution and corresponding federal law. And whereas, if the current federal protections prescribing racial, ethnic discrimination are abolished, prohibition against such discrimination shall remain in Pennsylvania Constitution. Whereas, once added to Pennsylvania Constitution, the right to be free from racial and ethnic discrimination under law cannot be eliminated except by judicial decision finding amendment unconstitutional or approval of subsequent constitutional amendment. And whereas, if such amendment is approved, the Pennsylvania General Assembly may pass new laws to implement the amendment, but if not, pass any law inconsistent with it. Now therefore be it resolved that by Northampton County Councils to support Pennsylvania Constitution being amended by adding the new section providing equity to rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of an individual's race or ethnicity.
Is there any discussion on this matter?
I would like to say that the Joint Resolution Number 2021-1 is broken down into three ballot questions. Mr. Myers' resolution covers one, but the other two resolutions, I mean, the other two aspects of amending our Pennsylvania Constitution have to do with limiting the governor's right to or ability to make a emergency disaster declaration, either limiting the duration to 21 days, as in one of the ballot questions, which would be section, adding a new section to Article Four of the Pennsylvania Constitution, or the second, which would require two-thirds legislative approval by both the House and Senate to present the governor's order. I want people to be aware when they are voting to make sure that they look at these. Because although that I will agree with Mr. Myers' resolution, I think it's important to look at all the ballot questions and to very much scrutinize how we change or how we endorse the change of our Pennsylvania Constitution. Thank you.
Any other?
Just a point of order with what Ms. Zarinski is saying. Yeah, it, in the middle of my resolution are these two traps. And I think it's awfully important that we educate the people of the county to let them understand what's actually going on here. If you vote one down, don't get caught up in it. We've got to understand that this is awfully important to everybody.
I just want, I want everybody else to have a chance first. Go ahead.
No, I, I mean, I just wanted, I, I want to be clear because what I'm, what I'm voting on, I, I heard what Ms. Zarinski said. We're voting right now on the equal rights part for the ballot and that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's, that's just wanted to be very clear. All right. Thank you. That's all.
I just wanted to say that I went to the CCAP meeting this, two, a week ago and they addressed this. They had a whole section on election reform, these ballot questions specifically. They had a couple of speakers on it and they made it very, very, very clear that CCAP's position was that this is the part of the resolution that they support. The other two that you referred to, they do not. So that's our CCAP position. But there's a whole commission on election reform that has looked at this, embedded this, and is in line with what we were saying. And so when you brought up at the last meeting, like, does voting on this section mean that you're co-signing the other two? And they made it very clear that it does not. And that's why I really appreciate that we pulled out the segments and that this is the one that I chose to focus on. Additionally, I don't know the name, maybe Mr. Kusick does, but there's also a CCAP representative who is, is tagged to be on the committee at the legislature so that CCAP's representation is even deeper in. And I can't remember the name of the person.
Is that Lisa?
Maybe you do? Because he spoke at this also. So just to let you know that this was discussed and it was timely because we had just discussed it, that we, what we are doing here is very much in line. I believe Ms. Cozy is also on the election reform as a non-voting member. I know our county executive spoke to that committee. So I think like what we're doing here is just affirming what everybody else is saying and that we're not highlighting the stuff that we don't support, which is we're not going to get in the middle of telling the governor, the legislature, what they can do. That we're just going to vote for equal rights for all. Correct?
He knows about more about, no, I, I mean, I, I, I just wanted to be clear. Yeah, you broke, it was broken into three parts and this is the part on, on what Mr. Myers talked about. And I know there's other issues, but this is what I'm voting on. That's.
But I, I think Ms. Zarinski brought up at the last meeting very, very reasonably to say if we vote for this piece, like if there's three parts, does voting for this co-sign the other aspect? And it does not. It was made very clear. So I think that's important that we have clarified that.
Right. I just want to say that nowhere in Carrie's resolution does it say that it's a CCAP, that we're presenting it to CCAP, I don't think. But my point is that we are, we are not a body that is beholden to whatever CCAP says. If we're going to vote on something, we vote on it on its own merit and because we endorse it. And so I understand the importance and the weight of CCAP moving something forward, but the ability of this body and the power of this body is to decide what it is that we will do. And yes, I will endorse yours and I'm glad that we separated them out. I further wanted to tease this out because I think this is very important to the electorate to be able to understand that there are three distinct pieces that will potentially modify our Pennsylvania Constitution. And there is one that I absolutely agree with. And that is on the race and ethnicity and the equal rights. The other two, I definitely do not. And I wanted to make that clear, that voting for one does not mean you're voting for all. So I appreciate the, my ability to be able to clarify this and thank you for all the work that you do, Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes, Karen.
One other thing. Mayor Pantow asked me that I, when this resolution came, I get passed, maybe forward to his office for them to vote on.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Mayor Pantow?
Yes.
Asked that we send this, so city council could vote on it, the city of Houston.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions or comments?
Comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting conversation here and, you know, we've all, most of us at the diocese have all spoken to voters, constituents. And a lot of times, these ballot questions are very confusing. And, you know, as, as a point of what we're talking about, so just, you know, make sure, if you're a voter out there, make sure you understand what you're agreeing to and, you know, ask advice or look into it because sometimes the way they're worded, it's, it's a challenge to understand what they really mean. Thank you.
I did want to add one more point in listening to that meeting and listening to that discussion. And I believe your testimony was probably simultaneous or very close in time to this because people were leaving to go to where you were. But it again is very nice to hear and affirm that what we are doing here in Northampton County is ahead of the curve compared to what other people are doing. Because as they're bringing up the questions about same-day voting, as they're bringing up the questions about, oh, we have to talk about e-polling books. We already have them. We've already done it. So it speaks well to us, to this administration, everything we worked so hard for over the past so many years, that we are in the position that we are. And that it's, again, a point of pride that we're in a good place in the state as far as counties and election safety and security. I mean, I just, and I just think that we're in a leader, in a leadership position that we should keep affirming that. Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Mr. Lot?
Yeah, I, I apologize. It maybe should have came up under the executive report, but I, I did understand that we put a new air conditioning unit on the roof and it, it sits right above this council chamber. And I was very happy and looked forward to summertime to see if what, what they've done works, but they put, what I read is they put vibration plates in. So I don't know about anybody else, but I don't hear that well. And every time that unit kicked on, I had a very difficult time hearing. So I'm hoping I can hear more at a council meeting, but, and I'd like to thank whoever thought about making that a quieter unit above here, thank you, because it, it's, it's very difficult to hear when that unit kicks on. So apologize if I'm out of order with that, but I wanted to say it because it meant a lot to me to have that, to see they thought about the noise that, that unit creates. So, thank you.
So you're saying you can hear better now?
Well, it's not running, so of course I can hear better now, but I'm waiting to, not only am I waiting for summer for the nice weather, which we're not getting today and tomorrow, but I'd like to see if there's these vibration plates and there's a certain guy out there I'm going to hold accountable if, if what I read doesn't pan out. But, thank you.
He's coming for you. All right, thank you. Any county council committee reports?
I defer my report to you.
We just had a human services meeting report prior to this meeting. Chrissy Bernard from Health Choices did a report and she announced that for the first time in over 18 years, we're going to have an RFP for the provider. For, what's?
Magellan.
Magellan.
Magellan is going to be reconsidered along with several other providers. I'm trying to think. Greysdale did a report. They talked about the configuration of staffing and changes that they have considered. And also, we don't have a report as of yet on the civil service. Looks closer than ever, but no cigar yet. Always doing a good job. Can't say enough about them.
That's my report. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
I hope I did you proud, man.
Of course you did.
Mr. Lot?
Economic Development Committee meeting was held earlier today at 3:30. We talked about two, two different grants. Norco Round One Grant, which was approved tonight at this meeting, which will make, I believe it was 16 projects at 183,713. And we also approved emergency medical service grant projects. We discussed them at our committee meeting. We approved them today. That's 14 more projects, 104,661 in total to help out our local municipalities and townships with their emergency medical service projects. Thank you.
I have a question.
There's no questions in the report.
No, I have to ask you a question, but is there any way that in the future, we could get like a little heads up about some of those grants that may be coming up prior to, like, we hear about it after when it comes to us, but.
Well, I, I think you, I think you get noticed when they, they open up and you get a detailed, you get the same information that potential applicants and ultimate grantees get.
Just to make, because when you're in passing in places, people go, and now with COVID money, people are more sensitive to asking, so I just want to.
So, yeah, when, when you get all that information, when they, when it opens up, when the applications are due, what the requirements in the applications are, it's all, it's all very, also all very public. It obviously has to be.
Are you asking about the actual awards, getting them a little earlier or just the announcement of the project?
Free, free. You know, just like, you know.
Yeah, got it. Well, we'll make sure that that gets pushed right to you when, no, no, I'm not trying to be.
No.
We'll make sure it gets pushed right to council, right as it's occurring. So you don't have to go hunting for it.
I appreciate that because there's a lot of email these days.
Yeah, no, I got it. I got it.
Anybody else have a report?
Okay.
Committee liaison. Ken.
We had prison advisory board.
We had the prison advisory board this week and I apologize, I left my notes at home. We're still doing that, you know, via telephone, but I'm going to, don't hold me to the numbers. We're still doing that, you know, via telephone, but I'm going to, don't hold me to the numbers, but I'm going to wing this off the top of my head. I believe it was 2,000, 2,600 roughly tests given at the prison. We roughly have 544 inmates in our prison. We furloughed, I want to say 27 right now. Right now, we have zero cases in the prison. We have four guards that are quarantining currently. We've doubled the amount of tablets in the prison, and they're all up and working now. We used to run with about 200, now we're over 400. We did that because they cannot have visitations, so this way they can contact, more access to contact families, you know, loved ones. We, they, the prison has given them more airtime. In other words, the hours that they can use the tablet has been greatly expanded to, to, you know, allow them to reach out to their family, being that they don't have visiting. So, oh, another thing did, they just started opening up a little bit, and we, you know, everything is watching on the numbers, but they, they're giving them more airtime now. They're taking small groups and allowing them, you know, and they're keeping those small groups together. You're in that small group, you get out in that small group. But they're trying to give them more airtime, so to speak. So, they're doing everything they can without jeopardizing the, the zero we have in there right now. So, hopefully, oh, and the last thing that was talked about was, they still do not have an exact date when they get vaccinated, but we're hoping, I mean, we're hoping very shortly, they're working on trying to get the vaccination in, in the prison, and that will, when that happens, that will allow a lot more ability to, to allow the inmates to do more. So, thank you. That ends my report.
Just to follow up your report, is there any discussion about work release yet? Is there a timeline for that? I know we're, we're paying a lot of money to rent that building.
Yes, there is a discussion about work release, and at this time, and clearly with the level of infection that's out there right now, we're not going to open up work release.
Okay.
We have to see infections come way down before we do that.
Any other liaison?
I just had a follow-up, and I wanted to just raise this issue for our Lehigh Valley Planning Commission folks. There's going to be a federal infrastructure bill that's passed at some point, and, and much to my chagrin, the first thing we hear about is that we may be able to take a train to New York City in 2035. You know, in the meantime, we have bridges, we have exits off of Route 22 that desperately need repairs. So, my hope is that we push on the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study, that if federal money is available, that we get some of our bridges fixed, and we get some of our exits off of Route 22 worked on, because that's where, that's where we need to be focused, not on a train ride to New York in 2035. Thank you.
Follow up on that, on the Planning Commission Liaison Report. We had a, we had a meeting last, last week, on Thursday. It was, it was a pretty, it was a pretty long meeting with a lot of discussion on warehousing, again. They actually, they actually had a warehouse that was proposed in Airport Road, similar to the one they just put in, that still doesn't have any trucks there yet, and actually made recommendations not to go with the project. And that was kind of one I can remember that, like, the only one I can really remember that they actually said, it's, it doesn't fit the future LV. There's a bike path behind it, there's, there's occupied businesses that, you know, would have to come out, and, and a lot of them, believe it or not, it's a small little strip mall, but there's a lot of functional businesses that, you know, so there was, and of course, the big one is, you know, the, the infrastructure, the, the roads can't handle it. The trucks didn't even start at the other one. So, I just don't know what 329 and Airport Road they're going to do. It looks like they're trying to make a little mini industrial park, I think, or something there, so they're going to have to figure that out. But anyway, so that's really all I have to report. I just think there's a big problem that we have to address, and it's coming faster and faster.
Madam President, can I ask Mr. McGee a question? When they were discussing this, and you talked about 329 and Airport Road, we always just know that as Frank's Corner, going back to when I was a kid. I don't know who Frank was, but it was Frank's Corner. Anyway, the thing is, for, for years, that, at, at morning rush and afternoon rush, you could sit there forever because of turning and all that. I mean, I'm just, did that come up, that, I mean, already there, before you even get into putting more at that intersection?
Right.
It, it's already jammed up. I mean, and that was previous to much of the new housing that, that went into the areas that feed 329 and, and Airport Road.
Yeah, there was some discussion, mostly the businesses that were being impacted, but yeah, they actually do a traffic study, but they don't do a traffic study on some of the local roads. Don't think they do. I think they really focus on the highways and the state roads and interstates, but, you know, I was even thinking, like, maybe they should look at traffic warehouse or impact study, like a virtual study, like, this is the traffic now, here's what happens when you put this thing here. They tell you how many trucks are going to come in and out, but, you know, I just, you know, it's, it's, they, they got their hands full, because there's really no teeth, and, you know, and, and I'm actually going to follow through with the recommendation, because I'd like to see where the recommendation goes and how's, how's it perceived by the township. Do they take it, or do they just say, well, you know what, here? You know, there were some other things brought up at the meeting I thought was pretty helpful. Somebody talked about, you know, an, like, an endowment fund or something to try to buy, we can only do so much with the, with the open space, you know, policy, maybe we need more, maybe we need some kind of a trust, because they're, they're just selling and, you know, they're just going to sell the land and, you know, as, as they've been doing. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? County clerk report?
I, I have one, and I just figured I'd add it there, because I'd just like to thank all of the IT folks for helping us with the Zoom and navigating through. I know there was times when I couldn't get on my computer. I called them, they called me right back, so, and, and everybody, all the staff here that did a great job with helping us navigate through, that was a pretty great job that yous did.
If we're handing out thanks, Madam President, I would like to thank Mr. Giovanni, who came in with our IT plug-in to, to, to the technical folks, as well as our staff, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank him for helping me turn on my computer this evening. Thank you very much. A solicitor's report. Motion to adjourn. All favor.
Aye.
Happy Easter, happy Passok, enjoy, enjoy, enjoy.